The Caledonia Township Planning Commission meeting, August 18th, 2005. I'll call a roll. Mr. Curtis is absent. Ms. Cutler?
Here.
Mr. Bradshaw?
Here.
Ms. Lindsay?
Here.
Mr. Clement is absent. Everly is present. Mr. McLean is absent. So we have a quorum. Consideration of the meeting agenda. Do I have a motion?
Move approval of tonight's agenda.
Everly will second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We have an agenda. Next item on the agenda is for the folks in the audience, we have a two-minute public comment period where you're welcome to come up, give your name and where you live in Caledonia. If you don't have anything you want to say, that's fine, too. Seeing no comment, we'll close that portion of the meeting. We have two weeks or two meetings worth of minutes to consider. So I guess I would propose we talk first about the meeting on July 7th, 2025. Are there any comments or changes to that? Anybody know so? Seeing none, then we'll have the same question on the meeting minutes for the 21st. Any provisions or changes? Anything? Okay. No comments, then I will ask for a motion to approve these two sets of minutes. So moved?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Meetings, the minutes are approved as written. Next item, conflict of interest. Any of the present members have a conflict of interest on the items on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move ahead. New business? We have none. So unfinished business is continuation of the site plan review for Broadmoor Mall, 7163 and 7171 Broadmoor for an 11,143 square foot retail strip commercial building. Applicant is Mr. Chabra. Agent is Feenster Associates, and this is postponed from April 21st. So I think I may need a little reminder on where we are in the process. Do we do or have to do a public hearing on this?
We do not.
Okay.
What we have in front of you today is a revised site plan submittal package for what the applicant is calling Broadmoor Mall. This is at the corner of Broadmoor and Craft Avenue. The property is Zone C2, and it's within the overlay. It's comprised of two parcels, and one of our conditions is that if this were to be approved, that those parcels be combined into one. Since the last meeting, the applicant has taken the comments from the planning commission at the April, I think it was April that we last met. They also conducted a traffic study this past week. Staff and our township engineer, M.DOT, and the road commission had a phone conversation about that traffic study and some of the results and talked through the uses on the site. One of the big comments from them, and they're okay with the driveway locations, with the idea of the left turn from Craft into the site as well as the right-in, right-out on Broadmoor. But they did say that the uses proposed, retail and then the carryout restaurant, if there were to be something like a drive-through at this location, then there would be concern about having a driveway on Broadmoor. So there was a recommendation that if this were to be approved, to add a condition that a drive-through could not be located on this property. That would have to come before the planning commission as a special use anyway, but we wanted to make that into the record and let you all know about that. That is not included in the staff report, so if that was something you wanted to include, we'd recommend you add that to those conditions. The applicant is proposing a bike path crossing north of the proposed drive entrance on Craft, and they're proposing signage for that bike path crossing as well. They've modified the parking location. There were some concerns before about the quantity of parking on the Broadmoor frontage. So that's been modified to be only 40% of the required parking. They relocated the handicap ADA accessible parking spots and added the deductible warning plates. They relocated the dumpster. One of the conditions that we've added is that the dumpster enclosure be constructed of the same building material as the building itself. They did add a loading space to the site. They provided a cross-access easement to the Lake Michigan Credit Union property along the Broadmoor frontage. And they have updated the building materials. There was some conversation at the last meeting. They were showing a vinyl-sided building that kind of evoke the same finish of a wood, but they've modified that to do all hardy board, which is consistent with our township ordinance. They've updated the photometric plans and signage as well as their landscape plan. In our review, we've included conditions that all of the act-grade mechanicals be screened from view and utilities located underground. We do want to see that that cross-access easement is reviewed by our township attorney and recorded prior to a building permit being issued. And then we also wanted to add the condition that pavement that would be necessary to connect the proposed driveway with the property line of Lake Michigan Credit Union, that pavement connection within the cross-access easement be built by the owner if Lake Michigan Credit Union is redeveloped. We added a condition that the pathway alignment be constructed of concrete. That's what we're specking along Broadmoor. I think you probably see the one that's going in by the daycare center. That pathway is already constructed, so we want to maintain the same building or the same material of construction and that those ADA plates be added. They are showing those on their plans. That the pathway have connection to the frontages of the building on Broadmoor. We want to make sure that the landscaping plan, the note is added that irrigation is provided and that any dead or dying plant material be replaced if it fails to establish. We did note that the shade trees on the plan do not provide the canopy that is listed in our ordinance typically for shade trees. So we've offered a few modifications that they could consider in an updated landscape plan, and so we would recommend that staff review that updated landscape plan. I mentioned the dumpster enclosure. The exterior colors of the building are low reflectance, but we've included that anyway as a condition that the lighting continue to comply with our ordinance. These are some of our standard conditions. The rooftop mechanicals shall be screened from view. It's difficult to discern whether those mechanicals are indeed screened based on the parapet that the applicant is showing on the architectural renderings. So we're just adding that as a condition, and we would ask that the applicant provide some dimensions to what those rooftop mechanicals are and the height of those to make sure that they would be screened from view. And then we've included our general conditions related to compliance with the township engineer's report, the fire chief's recommendations. And then I've added that number 15 about the special use and that we would not allow a driveway there. I guess the only, or I'm sorry, a drive-through there. Perhaps there's a day when Lake Michigan Credit Union redevelops, and the driveway that's at the Credit Union could be used for both of these properties on Broadmoor. And this property, they could close their driveway on Broadmoor. That might be an instance where a drive-through could be considered. But right now, with that driveway so close to the corner of Craft, that is something that M.DOT did not want to see happen. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those and the applicants here today as well.
Any questions from the commission?
Are we concerned that there's an additional one parking space in the front?
No, I wasn't concerned about that.
Roundup of one, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, Mr. Chabra, do you have anything that you'd like to add? Do you have any, or Mr. Feenster? I'm sorry, I don't know your name.
My name is Adam Peenstra with Peenstra and Associates. Dave Hank is on vacation, so I'm filling in for him today. Yeah, a lot of the conditions, you know, no problem with. We'll update the dumpster to match the building. We did a while ago actually have a chat with Lake Michigan Credit Union, and they were pretty adamant that there not very a cross-connection there because of where their drive-through is situated, and they just didn't want to worry about the traffic there. So that was a firm no from them. There were some notes about, you know, additional sidewalk connections from the development of the Broadmoor bike path. We'll add those in. There is a little bit of work to do on the landscaping plan, so no problem getting those trees and everything updated and the notes added. We'll comply with all those on mechanical screening. And we'll note, the elevation shows that the parapet is at least three foot high, which I believe is what's required by the ordinance, and I did look up the HVAC units that were listed on the mechanical plan, and those are 33-inch-high units. So the HVAC units are actually shorter than the parapet. And I also checked site distance basically from northbound Broadmoor, the furthest point away to where you've got the best angle to possibly see those. And from the elevations, I calculated the mechanicals of less than five feet high would remain hidden by a three-foot-high parapet. So we should have no view of any mechanicals on the roofs for that. In terms of the township engineer review, he asked that we add a landing spot for the bike path across Craft. We'll definitely get that in. He wanted to make sure that those landing pads were concrete so we can get the detective warning plates on there. Again, no problem with that. He said he had a few drainage comments that we'll need to address and work with him on, but we don't anticipate any issues there. We'll get the grease trap added to the site plan. He'd asked for some modification to both the shared access easement to make it a little wider to allow for some flexibility and to the water main easement to make sure that it's easy for Lake Michigan Credit Union or its redevelopment to connect to the water main that we're putting in. So all very logical, very easy to implement. He also noted that the sidewalk that connects our development to Craft looked a little steep. I double-checked, and yeah, it's at about 7%. So we're going to need to add a railing and a landing there to make it ADA compliant, but again, it's not really a big deal. The only real question I had is when I looked up the township bike path ordinance, it says bike paths are supposed to be asphalt. Now, I hear that it sounds like there's some sort of special thing going on along Broadmoor there, but I, and I don't know the background to that, but I mean, the ordinance seems to lay out pretty clearly that it's supposed to be asphalt. So I'm wondering where the decision came from that all of a sudden we need to put in an eight-foot-wide concrete bike path along Craft there, or sorry, along Broadmoor there. So.
I'm going to ask Laney to help us understand that, if you're able to. We've talked a lot about bike paths versus walkways and
Sure.
Depending on the context, we'll take a gravel path in some places. Okay. But there are other places that we expect enough traffic that we want something different. So.
Yeah.
Do you have a sense of that?
That's a good question. I don't have the answer to that, but I can talk to our township engineer and have him get back to you about that.
I didn't know if the overlay area had different requirements.
Yeah, I mean, we just want to follow the ordinance, and you know, obviously, concrete's a little more expensive, too. And so when the ordinance says we're supposed to use asphalt, and then we're all of a sudden being told the condition of approval is concrete bike path, I'm sitting there scratching my head a little bit saying,
Sure.
"Well, the ordinance says we're supposed to use asphalt, and now all of a sudden we're being asked to use concrete." So I just want to make sure that there's a good basis and that requirement that, before we go commit to it.
I appreciate that.
So that's really the only thing I had there. So otherwise, I think Laney did a great overview of everything, and we're excited to finally be to this point that we can get approval and get building. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Thanks for participating. So do we have any other discussion at this point? Do you have any other questions?
Yeah, I do have a lot.
You might have to come back up.
Yeah. I'll start with maybe my questions from the planner's recommendation.
Are you close enough to your microphone?
Probably not. So yeah, we talked about, the applicant brought up the concrete, and that was one of the things that I noted, too. So I guess I agree. I want to be consistent with all of our rules. I do think there's certainly benefit to the township in building it in concrete. It might last 50 years instead of 20, but that's also a might. That depends how many times it gets cut with other utilities and how many trees grow up and make it move. The dumpster enclosure, I guess I wanted to bring up for further conversation. Personally, I think split face block is a better look and more durable and is going to last a longer amount of time. However, it's not going to match the building as well. So I just, I see that the applicant proposed split face block, and we're suggesting hardy board to match the building. So again, personally, I think the dumpster will look close enough to the building, and it's going to last longer and be more durable. So I would be okay with split face block. And then the other thing that came up was ADA warning plates at all driveway crossings. My experience has typically been that they should only go at road crossings, not driveways, and I don't recall putting these in at other, I guess, commercial installations. So I just wanted to make sure that we should or shouldn't be doing that. A few things. And I don't know if you want to speak to any of those, Laney, or if we should talk to Todd offline, or.
I would talk to Todd about the warning plates. I think that having them where the bike path crosses the driveway was the desire for safety.
Yeah, I mean, if you drive 28th Street, for instance, there's definitely not an ADA warning plate at every driveway.
No, there's not.
So.
No.
And I'm not in the blind community, obviously, but my understanding is it causes them confusion because they're anticipating when they see those domes, an actual street crossing versus just a driveway.
Okay.
But I only know a little, not all of it.
So we could just modify that condition that would say.
It was in, end of number four.
I guess we could just say if required, if best practice
Okay.
for ADA.
Yeah, I mean, people on 28th Street may just not have been sued yet because that's the only enforcement for ADA, so.
And then in terms of the.
Concrete versus asphalt.
Concrete versus asphalt. I think, I mean, I do know that the concrete path is built by the Robinson Dental. So that's the genesis of that comment is to have consistency for the pathway section. But I hear it says that unless another location or design is approved by the engineer, then I think we would just see what his recommendation is on that material. And then for the dumpster enclosure, we can remove that condition.
Does anybody have any objection to removing that? I think it's reasonable, so let's take that out.
That would be removing item eight.
Okay, that was all my Laney letter-related comments. I have lots of other plan comments. So Adam, if you want to come back up. How could the township maintain the trail along Craft or the north side of the property 20 years from now, once it's failed? I don't see any easement or any opportunity for the township to take care of it long-term.
The trail, you mean that kind of goes around the edge of the site?
Yep.
We can definitely add an easement to that. I think that's more of an oversight than anything else. I'll make a note to make sure we get that added.
Thank you. Your non-moldurized path cross-section just says 2%. Make sure it's constructed at 2% max. We're not going to accept anything greater than 2%. And obviously, construction tolerances are tight on something like that. The sign that's shown on sheet C1 says it's six feet high and eight feet wide, but the sign detail that was provided in the packet is larger than that, so I just wanted additional clarity on which one was accurate. The detail on the packet was a roughly 10-foot-wide sign and still roughly six feet tall, but I just wanted to make sure that it met ordinance requirement.
We will do a review of all the signage under a separate permit process, too.
On sheet C2, there's a, I guess, lost note kind of near where the six-inch sanitary line is for a two-inch tapping valve sleeve and box, and I wanted to make sure that it truly was a lost note. There's not maybe a line missing there. Because I think you're going to serve the building off of the new water main that you're building, not off of Craft.
That would be correct. Before we added that water main, obviously, there was a tap there, so.
I think I was hoping to see inverts for the cross covert. I did specifically ask for those at our last meeting for Craft, but looking at contours, I'm pretty sure it's somewhere down in the 798 range and will actually drain, but would have liked to have seen those. Your 12-inch storm sewer that's, well, it's supposed to be 15-inch, but it's called out 12 on your plan, crossing the driveway should be revised to 15. There's multiple locations on sheet C3 where the trail is roughly designed at a 3% cross slope. So those are going to need to be modified before it's built, again, for that 2% max to make it ADA compliant. In particular, the worst offender is the, I guess, southwest corner by Craft where you tie into the neighboring property. There's a foot and a half drop across an eight-foot trail. That's not going to work. You have a 1 and 7 eighths inch restrictor plate that is two feet above your outlet control pipe, so I'm questioning how that's going to work.
Dave worked at that drainage design, so I don't know the specifics of it. I don't know if that was a typo or if there's sandy soils that we're doing channel protection infiltration. But we'll definitely make sure that's addressed with township engineer.
I think the last comment I had was that the traffic study made an assumption, and it was completed in mid-June, that there was no adjacent development going on, which makes me question if they even drove out here because there's a new residential neighborhood immediately to the south on Craft, and there's a new commercial, well, commercial park, business park, immediately south of this area. So I question a lot of the conclusions of the traffic study because that's a terrible assumption. And I just wanted to put that on record. So that's all the comments that I have. Oh, nope, there's one more. The traffic study also suggested having the pedestrian crossing at the intersection of Craft and M37, but it talked about how M.DOT didn't want to do that. But I think the correspondence that I saw today when I asked the township engineer said that that was actually more of a road commission thing. I guess personally, I still think having a mid-block crossing in a valley with people often going 40 miles an hour southbound on M37 and making that little right onto Craft scares me. So I don't feel very comfortable about that pedestrian crossing. But I don't really have a solution either, so.
Ms. Cutler, Ms. Lindsay, any questions or comments? I don't have any specifics beyond what Tim has mentioned, and I'm, I guess, in my mind, the things that we have to sort out are whether we are going to condition this on some things that apparently we don't fully understand or know right now.
Yeah.
So we either have to put some contingency into our requirements or table this and get clarity on those. So I think the issues of the pathway material, I think we could probably understand what we want to do, whether we're on ground to require concrete.
Yeah, I just read the standard. It says asphalt as reviewed or approved by the township engineer. So there is a caveat there which mimics what we have in our condition. But our condition says concrete
Yeah.
unless otherwise stipulated.
Well, I think at this point, I would be inclined to let that stand without having input from the engineer. But I think we could write our condition in a way that we request clarification for the justification of that.
Definitely.
Yeah. Yeah, I think I'd be willing to entertain a motion on the request. I'd be willing to stumble through it if anybody wants to do it.
Trying to catch up on all my notes. Trying to catch up on all my notes.
Well, you could either catch up on them and do the motion or you could correct me as I forget your items. And then I could do the motion, so whatever you'd like.
Sure. I can do it.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion that the site plan is approved with the conditions of the planner's letter dated August 4th, except striking number eight and modifying number four to say ADA warning plates meeting best practices. And adding number fifteen that no drive-throughs will be allowed on the site due to traffic impacts. And number sixteen that an easement will be necessary for the pathway along Craft and curving over to M37 within the site. And that the stormwater controls need to be updated.
And I think you'd also talked about the two percent max slope. Is that something you want to add here or is that?
It actually, meeting ADA is included in the engineer's letter, which is referenced in the planner's letter, so I think technically it's covered.
And then the sign ordinance issues will be sorted out in that rule process. Do we have a motion? Do we have any discussion? I will second the motion. I imagine this is a roll call vote?
Yes.
Mr. Bradshaw?
Yes.
Ms. Lindsey?
Yes.
Ms. Cutler?
Yes.
Mr. Everly votes yes, the motion passes. All right, what did I do with my agenda? Dicking through all this stuff. And thank you very much for your patience and for being proactive. Thank you. I don't think I need to call public comment because we don't have a public anymore.
No public.
Commissioners comments. Okay, correspondence and staff updates.
I just wanted to give you all a heads up that the township has started a parks and trails vision effort. They hired a firm by the name of McKenna to work on that. There's going to be an upcoming public input event. They're going to pop up at the Harvest Festival at the end of September. So I just wanted to get that on the record and invite everybody. I'm sure you'll be hearing more about that as it gets closer. But it should be a fun opportunity for you all to give some insight into parks and trails. The township is collaborating with the county, of course, and also the village. Jennifer and Tim are on the steering committee for the effort as well. So if you have any input, join us at that event.
Thank you. Well, at this point.
I have one more quick question for Laney.
Sure, go ahead.
What do you anticipate for our next meeting?
Oh, thank you. The next meeting will be September, the third Monday in September, the sixteenth, I think it might be. And we have, it's the fifteenth, we have Lads on that agenda. So they're coming back for the golf cars, I think they call it, not carts, cars. So Lads will be back.
Okay. Motion to adjourn. Second, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Motion passes, we are adjourned.
Thank you.